That's right. Mr. Campos, could I borrow your son for two seconds? You may. All right, just two seconds. But could you come sit down with me for just a second? No, bring this, bring it up. Can you tell me what that is? You don't know, but it's an iPad, right? Can you hold it up so everybody can see? Well, I just did this because when I was born, there was no such thing to look like this. And now this is... How old's your son, Mr.?
Five.
He's five, and he's probably had that for, what, five and a half years, right?
Started with the lead pack.
That's a lead pack. So, this is what our job is, to educate children who are growing up with things that most of us never grew up with. So, good evening, buenos tardes. Does anybody need a translator? Okay, well, I'll just say buenos tardes. Welcome, thank you for being here. My name's Elliot Duchan. It's my privilege and honor to serve for RUPA Unified School District and its students. So, thank you all for coming. This is something new, and I'll explain kind of what it follows. It follows a year of community outreach. So, I'd like to make a couple of introductions. We have a board member, Brian Schaefer, sitting in the back of the room. Board member Donna Johnston, who's sitting right here. We're pleased to have our mayor, Mr. Frank Johnston. Did you write in on your hurry? And my assistant, Ms. Denise Collins, who does everything. Our deputy superintendent, Tammy Elsitt. Director of Community Parent Outreach and Community Support, and I think we close.
Parent of all in community outreach. Good enough.
Close! Mr. Jose Campos. And your DJ for the evening, Mr. Ricardo Solis. If you don't mind, I'm gonna try to put this on a tie and take the coat off, because we don't want to. So, welcome. Last year, we started, because we were required to, I'll be, you know, admit this, a series of community outreach programs throughout the district in order to do something called our L cap, which I'll talk about in a little bit, which is a local control accountability formula. And it came with a lot of regulations from the state, and I thought, oh, the state's telling us more things to do. Well, it turned out, in my tenure in the district, which has been 13 years, tennis superintendent, it was one of the most valuable things, I think, that we did. Oh, and I did introduce our business superintendent, Paula Ford. This is sort of round two, which will be, I think, probably forever, and at least in RUPA, if not public education, where we're looking for a number of ways to meet with the public and kind of talk about the district, give feedback, and really reach out to the community. So, really, the objective tonight is primarily to provide information and ask questions. What we would like you to do, there are three-by-five cards in the rear of the room. If you would fill one out with a question, we'll try to put those in some type... If there's like 50 questions, and 10 of them are about where I was born, I'll answer that one. I will not answer any personal questions about any staff member in the district, except myself. It's only of some value to the audience, and I will not engage in any of that. I have an open-door policy, so if anybody has an issue they need to bring to me, please make an appointment with Ms. Collins in the back of the room, and I will spend as much time as it takes to go through your issue. So, preparing RUPA students for college in 21st century careers. And I want to say, right from the get-go, to me, they're the same, that to enter a career now, or to enter college, basically, you have to have the same types of skills, skills in technology, mathematics, and not just reading and writing, but mathematical understanding in reading things like technical manuals and newspapers, reading everything from, you know, the cartoon things that, you know, we get information on to a computer screen, which is very different from the textbooks I grew up on. So, just a little bit about our district. We have 19,300 students, 903 of the best certificated staff in the state of California, 1,089 of the best classified staff in the state of California. We have 27 schools, 16 elementary, they're, you know, pretty basic elementary. We don't have magnet schools. Three middle schools, three high schools, one continuation high school, one learning center, and one online academy, which opened last year. One-third of our district's students are English language learners. If you are coming in and you need a translator, you need a translator?
Is it okay if I ask you something?
Yeah.
I'll give you a certificate.
So, I have a laser pointer that nobody can use. Eighty-two percent of our students are either English language learners or free and reduced lunch, or both, and that's important, and I'll tell you why later. I believe that we offer the very highest quality instruction anywhere, period, whether it's the state of California, the United States, or anywhere else. And I will argue with all of the international studies about other school districts, that, I mean, other countries, because we educate every single student that comes in our door. Some of the program highlights. I said I would talk a little bit about the Local Control Funding Formula. Last year, funding in California changed radically. We used to get an amount per pupil, and it differed from districts across the state. It ranged from about $5,200 to up to over $10,000 or $12,000. So, last year, the legislature and the governor put together something called the Local Control Funding Formula and set a target for funding. That target is based on three things, basically, and this is oversimplifying, because nothing the state does is easy. But the number of pupils you have, you get a base grant, and that's about $5,200. You get a supplementary grant, which is about $1,700. And then, and that supplementary grant is for every student that's an English language learner or on free, reduced lunch. And then, for every number of those students over 55%, you get a supplemental grant, and that's about $22,500, something like that, $27,000. So, that's a major change. Now, when the legislature did that, they said we have to do school planning differently. So, you may be aware that we, the state, throughout the old California assessment system, there is a new one coming in, it's called Smarter Balance Testing. We piloted it last year. But we also have to come up with local accountability measures, things like number of students to graduate, our own assessments, and a lot of other factors. And we have to have this plan. It has to be made public to all of you, to the community, online, and then it has to be approved by the county office of education after our board approves. And we did this for the first time in June. Our plan went to the county, it was approved, so this year, we're operating on that plan. Now, part of that plan, how many people have heard of Common Core State Standards? And how many have heard that some people aren't very happy with Common Core State Standards? Well, we have had, I mean, the state of California has really mandated that school districts in California implement Common Core State Standards. The good part is that since 1997, RUPA Unified has had standards. We developed our own standards, and they were actually very good. In the early 2000s, the state mandated that all districts adopt state standards. So, we did that, even though, and I wasn't part of the development, but in my, in my really humble opinion, RUPA standards were better than the state standards, but we did not have the option to use RUPA standards. They were locally designed, they were designed by teachers, by staff throughout the district. But we did implement state standards. Well, now, we can't use state standards. We are, by state design, required to use Common Core Standards. Now, Common Core Standards are basically what you teach, and I'm not going to go along into that, but a couple of things that are untrue about Common Core Standards. It is not true that we don't teach math facts anymore. We want kids to be able to multiply, divide, add, and subtract. We also want them to be able to solve problems. We still teach reading. We teach reading for understanding, and there's an emphasis on problem solving, and it needs to be real-world problem solving. So, in order to develop the curriculum, the how, for Common Core Standards, we've relied on our teachers. And we have a units of study committee, which is, I have somewhere between 100 and 150 teachers that have come together in every subject area, well, English Language Arts and now, at every grade level, and from elementary through high school, and developed units of study. And this is a first cut. I mean, Common Core Standards have only been around a couple of years. This is our third year of implementation. I need to say that our units of study committee has done an incredible job. There are probably a few districts that are doing things similar to what we are, but they're not as good. As part of the units of study, as Common Core, so the units of study are our teacher-driven methods and content of what we teach. Now, the state is just introducing math books that are aligned with Common Core Standards, and we'll be adopting a math book later this year. English Language Arts in two years, is the timeline, one or two years. I'm looking at this as four, one more year. So, we will adopt state materials, and we're required to use state materials. Just as a kind of side comment, three states in the Union, California, Texas, and Florida, have state-adapted textbooks. And notice the word "book," because I showed you something in the beginning that was not a book, it was an idea. And we recognize that even in our district, most of our students and parents have iPads, smartphones, or something else. So, we will be making a transition to the delivery of instruction on more electronic devices. So, I need to tell you, there are three major things that are coming together in every school district in California. That's a brand-new funding model, it's the implementation of Common Core Standards, and the real, true implementation of technology. And I will tell you, each and each one of those on its own could bring a school district and classroom teachers to their needs. It's a formidable task. I'm very proud of what we've done in this district, but I recognize it is a lot of work. And on top of it, as you all know, we have never, at least in my lifetime, experienced an economic recession as we have in the last seven years. This year, for the first time in seven years, we hired new elementary teachers. We were fortunate. Every teacher that got a king suit was brought back, but we did not hire any new teachers, except to replace retirements and some really hard-to-find things like special education and speech and language. I'm gonna try to go through this quickly, because this is... I'm gonna repeat this at nine o'clock tonight for anybody who's late, and it will be about a five-hour presentation then. Right now, I'm gonna try to limit it to about half an hour or more. So, some highlights in RUPA. We opened Rivercrest Academy. It's an online academy, but it is not all online. We still believe face-to-face classroom instruction with a teacher is critical, so it's blended instruction. We have a AAA Academy. We have found something that probably you, as parents, know. Some students are really not prepared to enter high school. So, we've taken the most adventurous students, and we've developed a AAA Academy to provide intensive interventions and instruction for the most adventurous students. And so far, I think it's been pretty successful. There are still students that are going to be hard to reach, hard to teach, and it's gonna be hard. There's some kids just don't go through high school as easily as others. In our district, we offer two schools with dual-version programs. They're a program where students start 90% in Spanish in kindergarten and end up 50-50 in elementary, and by sixth grade, in Spanish and English, and the results are incredible. We just opened our middle school this year. It's just fantastic. I truly believe, well, it's not just a belief. Scientific research has proven that the earlier students learn multiple languages. They're more intelligent, and they're more fluent, not just in those two languages, but they can learn more languages easily. So, we're very proud of that program. Something new that we're doing, doing as part of our L cap and the money that we're getting to really provide targeted instruction for our English language learners, for our free and reduced lunch students, and to implement Common Core Standards, is the use of instructional coaches. Instructional coaches are teachers who have demonstrated excellence in the classroom, who have really volunteered or applied and been selected to serve half of their time developing curriculum, providing staff development, and the other half of their time in the classroom delivering instruction. As far as I know, we're the only school district anywhere that's doing this. And so far, I just have to say, it's incredible. Our coaches are just doing a tremendous job. So, I think it will be something that really, in the long run, will continually improve instruction for all of the students. They represent all grades in English and Language Arts, English Language Arts and Math at the high school. And we hope, first of all, we hope the funding grows from year to year. We're just reaching our level of funding that we had in 2007, '08. As it increases, we hope to add instructional coaches. Finally, a program that's been around for about six years is the Rubito Early College High School. It's about 200 students, and these students take regular college classes delivered by Riverside Community College instructors on the Rubito campus. We have students that graduate with one full year or more of community college, which is fully transferable to any college in California. So, we're very proud of that. Those students, when I've worked with people from RCC, tend to do much better at the community college and other colleges than students that have not been in our program, including students who have taken AP classes. So, about a year ago, we developed a Facilities and Technology Advisory Committee, and you can kind of see why. We have to house these 19,300 students in buildings, and we have to provide them with the most up-to-date technology, which is rapidly changing. And if you've been around different parts of our district, you know, our newest school was Patriot High School. It's about eight years old, and I'm not sure the actual oldest school. The oldest building that I know of is in West Riverside. It's 100 years old. We do not use it. It's fenced off, condemned, but it's historical, so we can't change it. But we have a number of schools that are 50 or 60 years old, schools like Arbo, RUPA Middle School, RUPA High School, and the list goes on. So, we asked the committee to look at the needs of the district, and they identified career tech needs. And while our high schools are doing a great deal for job preparation for students, particularly during the last eight years, funding for career tech, or vocational ed, whatever it's called, has diminished. The old shop classes that they had when I was in high school are not gone, but they certainly diminished. And now, they need to be replaced with classes like robotics, 3D printing. And we don't just offer auto mechanics anymore. You have to learn how to do diagnostics on computers, and pretty soon, we'll be repairing cars as they go down the road. So, we have aging science labs, even things like, if you go into a chemistry lab, over time, the sinks are rough, because people do experiments in those sinks, and they just wear it. It's a lot of wear and tear. We need high-tech career development labs to support career and technical education, and add computer labs to school sites. I mean, you all know, you can't even go to the bank without operating a computer. One of the things we learned from parents last year was the critical need, not only to provide more computer access for parents at home, but in the school, and support for parents to work on computers. So, one of the things we did, we increased the hours of our library media works, and we're putting computers in all of the library media centers, right? Where parents could come in, and our library media works are working with parents to help them with access to computers to help their children. Now, just aside things, something you may or may not know. The children who come from houses that have less money tend to speak fewer words. I don't know why that is. So, the most important thing any of us can do is speak to our children. When you think about it, you have to think with words. The more words a child knows, the more they can think. So, we need all of these tools to train our, to really provide our children with the tools they need. We need skills in core academic programs, but technological skills are becoming increasingly important as well. I mean, now, even to operate some cars, you need to have, you know, a PhD in sub-technology. Classrooms need to be equipped with the kind of technology students need in real world. And now, this is kind of funny to me, when I, when I actually read this slide, and it says, upgrading aging computer labs. There was never a computer in school, even when I went through college. Only computers they had. None of you remember this, but they had, they had punch cards. We really did not see computers until the 1980s, when the PC came out, and they were not popular in schools, really, till the 80s, 90s, and now, and they're everywhere. So, we have computers. When they're five years old, they're pretty much done. They don't work on network interfaces, they don't have the good software. We need the addition of wireless capabilities to provide students with greater access. Even a printer anymore has to operate without wires, from computers to printers to actual 3D printers and other devices. So, we need to add technology to enhance learning in the classroom. We have safety and security needs. If you went to school, when I went to school, there were no fences around schools. If you went to school in this district, most of the schools did not have fences around them. Sad to say, because I like that. I think it would be, in the best of all worlds, schools would be open. But unfortunately, there are people out there that, I think, for lack of better word, are unsavory. Their motives may not be good, or they're just trespassers, and we really can't allow them to get in. So, we have had fencing. We did in the process of replacing or adding fencing to every school in the district. Very proud to say that a lot of the fencing, if you see wrought iron fencing, it's done by our own maintenance staff. They do an incredible job. I'll match them against any iron workers, and they do just fantastic. We've been looking at door safety locks and electronic locks, things like exterior lighting. This is kind of all part of, you know, what we need to do. Concrete, if any of you have concrete at home, you know, after about 10, 15 years, it starts cracking, and it needs to be replaced. And as I said, we have classrooms that are 50, 60 years old. Some have been renovated even a couple of times, but they're old, and like a house, they need repair. We have repair needs. We don't have a lot of leaky roofs. Hopefully, as soon as a roof starts leaking, we fix it, but even the best roofing material has 15-20-year life. We need to replace plumbing. We had a plumbing line break at Pedley Elementary that flooded the library. I don't know, when my house was built, some genius decided where he put a nail through a pipe to put a radiator clamp on it, and it leaked through the whole ceiling. Well, you know, hopefully, our schools were better made than that, but pipes wear out. You know, heating components wear out, air conditioning gets outdated. We were fortunate. If you drive through the district, you'll notice we have solar panels in a lot of the schools. Eleven sites, I believe, all of the, eleven. Forty-five percent of our electricity comes directly from the sun now. So, that's pretty neat. We are, you know, we're doing a great job. We were able to replace air conditioning. There are some bathrooms in our district that have the original tile in it. And I really don't care about whether it's stylish or not, but when it was designed, it wasn't designed for modern cleaning methods. It's much more difficult to clean with, with modern tools. So, I mean, it was just, from a hygienic point of view, from a, in terms of making things easier and more efficient for our staff, and making them, you know, nice and modern, so our children have good places to go. We would like our schools to be centerpieces in every community in the district. On August 5th, the board did decide to put a measure on the ballot, measure EE. I am not here to tell you to vote for that. I cannot do that. But I can tell you to read your ballot statement and take a look at it. It's asking the voters to support and promote bonds for the school district, to help upgrade classrooms, ensure students have access to instructional technology, improve security, improve access for students with disabilities, repair aging and leaky roofs, hopefully, put some nice new facades on our older buildings, upgrade energy efficiency, excuse me, and modernize classrooms. That's all I'll say about that. So, I mentioned, when we started, that one of the things we were required to do as part of our Local Control Accountability Plan was reach out to parents. And we had, how many meetings did we get? Thirty? Something like 30 altogether. We had a lot of meetings. We had meetings at every single school in the district. We had meetings, I think we had one in Country Village. We've had them, I can't even remember all the places. We had night meetings, we had day meetings, and we got a lot of feedback. We met with our teachers' association, we met with our classified staff. We went to school sites. We had meetings where staff from the schools were specifically invited. We had input on the district website. We had a community review. And as I said, a lot of what we got, some of the most critical things from the community, were to work on the community outreach with technology and to provide, really, for the health and welfare of our children. We have a lot of services in the community, but they're not all core. And it's so important to do that. So, out of that, we've worked to connect families from RUPA Unified School District with healthcare services by providing outreach and community education. And that's why Mr. Campos is here. Stand up, so people know who you are. It's his full-time job to reach out to every one of you and make sure that services from our schools, through our schools, from the community, reach every child that needs services. And to that end, I believe now we have dental clinics at every elementary school, or 14.
We have other health clinics, or the health mobile units will begin, we're all out on November 20th. The dental, we're just waiting on consent form, and we're hoping to roll that out on the first campus.
So, that'll be all 16 altogether?
We're, access to all 16.
And for many years, we've had, as if Miles and Smiles and Project Kind have come. But this will provide consistent and pervasive services through the district, so that every child that needs medical or dental care will have the opportunity to get it. We're working with a network of services to provide support to families in times of need. We're promoting healthy bodies, healthy minds through education, opportunity, and support. We have a 100 Mile Club, probably one of the largest around, at every, every elementary school and other schools in the district. Besides thinking and talking, we want our kids to move around and eat healthy. So, it's very important for our kids to develop healthy habits. We tried, we've had salad bars in our schools, but, you know, it's a little harder to push lettuce than it is to push Oreo cookies. But we're working on it. So, we have worked with Borrego Health and dental clinics to provide the services to our children. So, if you have a question, please write it down on the three-by-five card, and I'll do my best to answer it. Otherwise, that's the end of my presentation now. Round two takes four hours, and it'll start at nine o'clock. So, do we have any cards filled out? None? Oh, Ms. Collins will give you cards. So, I'll give you two minutes if you have questions and you want to write them down. So, while we're doing that, I really would like, if we have, if I could embarrass you, if we have teaching or classified staff who work for the district, could you stand up, just so we can acknowledge who you are? Really appreciate everyone's support. President of our Classified Association, Diana Strong, is here. Wait, Diana, could you step up before we do, maybe not know who you are? While we're waiting, I'll tell you a couple more things. The district did get specific funds to implement Common Core Standards and the technology for the Smarter Balance Test. You may hear it as an S-BAC or Smarter Balance, but we have been doing that. There have been new computer labs going to the schools. They're like roving, not roving, they're mobile labs with... How many computers go on a raft? Twenty computers in a raft. They can be moved around. One thing we found, for those of you, how many of you have smartphones or iPads? Those don't work for the test. The test requires students to use a mouse. The test requires students to use a mouse, to use a keyboard. And a lot of our students, even that are technologically proficient, are not used to using desktop computers or portable computers. So we've kind of had to retrain students in how to use a computer for the test. If you have cards filled out, you want to give them to Zelzak. I'll answer the questions as best as I can. One thing while, again, while waiting, I really want to encourage you to be active in your school. If there's an PTA or parent club or booster club to the school, please help us to help Question number one, and the answer is... Oh, good question. How are we going to implement computer science programming into our schools? That, you know, that is what I forgot to talk about, because we are starting something brand-new this year. We have licenses for Microsoft modules. Aruba Valley High School's starting a program this year. Yeah, I'll wait till everybody's listening. And it's our hope that students will leave with certificates in computer programming. And some of this is, it's going to be very hard, I'll be honest. It's hard to implement specific programming classes. It's hard to find teachers or credentials to teach program. But we're starting. It's going to take a while, but we're going to work the best we can to do that. Somebody check their eyes tonight? This is the questions regarding Common Core being tested in freshman and junior students who are taking AP classes who have a completely different set of standards. How is the district going to meet both needs? Well, this is kind of an age-old problem. Common Core, I mean, AP classes and the curriculum for them are designed by the College Board. And in order to meet the qualifications for AP classes, we have to have a class that's approved by the College Board. The testing for that class, the AP test, is actually given separately and independently. It's given by ETS, students have to pay to test it. So we are doing the best we can to match Common Core, as we have in the past, to match district standards. But in the AP class, we are teaching the content of the AP requirement. Now, generally, and this is only passed, because we don't know what the state test is really going to end up looking like. They did not, by the way, when they pivoted it, we didn't get to see sample questions. I had an opportunity, I could look over kids' shoulders, and they were hard, even in the fifth and sixth grade. So it will be, you know, we will continue to do that. When we see what the state test looked like, we'll have to do kind of an alignment between the two. This is mental health needs of all students at school sites. Parents don't have a way to go to community clinics. Amen. One of the things that... I would really rather not talk to those people. One of the things that we have cut, and I'll be very honest about it. We had a very comprehensive mental health program eight years ago. We funded it out of what was then called categorical money. And we had to cut it, because our first priority was maintaining the jobs of our classified and certificated staff. So we are now looking at the needs of mental health. I, I don't know if Borrego's offering any mental health screen.
They offer, they have a mental health provider.
He's standing up right here, I'm sorry.
With regard to mental health, Borrego Health, which we have those mobile units that will be deployed on campuses, there's a fixed clinic at TRO. And then we'll have several campuses from Mariloma all the way to Aruba that will have a mobile clinic. They do have a mental health component. So forty-eight percent of our families are on public insurance, Medi-Cal, IHB, or Melina. So they can receive mental health through there. They also provide transportation. Now, I know, uh, we also have Ameda Coke, coordinator, special ed, and myself. We've worked with different providers. Uh, so together, we've been able to have FSA. So Ameda Coke has FSA on some campuses. And I've been working with Victor Community Support Services, where we can do referrals on several campuses for mental health. And Victor Community Support Services, they come to the school, and they're also able to come to the home to provide services. So through the different partnerships that Ameda Coke has developed, that I have developed, we've been working together so that we can expand through Riverside County Department of Mental Health, through their primary early intervention, MEI funds, if I got that correct, the services within Aruba. So just within our department, we have positions to help coordinate those services to expand that within this area. Uh, so that's the importance of just coordinating those, those, uh, different programs with the different providers.
So, and, yeah, thank you. So I, I will tell you personally, before I went into education, I worked in a psychiatric hospital, primarily with adolescents, and this was in the 1970s. I, the treatment of mental illness is complex, misunderstood, and very often overlooked. If you or anybody in your family has an issue, or your child has an issue, please let somebody at the school know. We just had an incident with a child in one of our schools yesterday, an 11-year-old. I am hearing more and more issues with, with problems with depression, suicidal behavior with younger and the under children. And if we don't take care of it early, it just will not be cared for. So we will do everything we can. I'm not sure I understand this question. Why is the state only giving 18 hours for outside learning?
Uh, that was more concerning mine, that as far as outside learning, as you guys did AYP last year.
Oh.
The outside learning, the two percent that you guys allowed the kids to go to my state's, they don't even know.
Well, first of all, just to clarify, that's what, so everybody kind of knows what we're talking about. Those are supplemental services. They're offered through Title I funds, and we provide it through outside contractors. So we offer the contract, they have a contract, it's up to the contractor, what they offer for the amount of time in there. So we can contract with them, that's what they, they pay for. It's a federal program, that's all that's available through it, through the particular contractors that we use. So it's not a state issue, it's, it's a federal issue, and it's a contractor issue. I can't really...
Second one is that, as far as the state accountability, where does it rank as far as education?
Very low. Sadly, very low. Probably in the bottom third quarter on the national test score. And I could give you a lot of reasons for that, because I think that, well, and internationally, we tend to, we tend to rank low. But there are two issues that I think are very critical. One is, other countries in the world say they educate all children, but India, for example, until two years ago, did not require all children to go to school. We require all children to go to school. We've had an exchange program with South Korea, and they have a fine educational system, but I, I could not find a special education student. I mentioned earlier that students from poverty just do not do as well on standardized testing. California has a large number of students with poverty. I believe, my goal is to educate any two students that enter this district, this kindergarten, they will have an equal opportunity to go to a state college, university, or community college. So I think those deficits, whatever it is, whatever causes them to be made up, I also think tests tend to be somewhat biased. That's what it's a date rank.
Well, see, the reason why I ask, because I just recently moved here from Nevada, and Nevada's fifty percent of the nation is held for no emphasis when it comes to education. And I thought about the Common Core through them, because I think so a lot of these facilities that they have in Nevada, and I just didn't write the way the education system was going there. And my question is, like, here, I didn't know that there were my son's attendants, because I didn't want to talk about that. And then when I talked about that, then I got the letter saying that you guys were there at YP. I wanted to know where that part of the rank is concerned, because it's like, you're saying that we're trying to educate our children, but we're not giving them the extra boost. And I'm looking at 18 hours of outside...
Yeah, I, you know, we can, we can maybe discuss this later, so everybody can hear it right now. But what I do want to say is that the AYP is a federal benchmark. Unbelievably large numbers of schools, including very high-performing schools, in Cupertino, where Apple Computers are programming proven schools. Because the number of 100% proficient was just unrealistically, California set an unreasonably high standard for proficient. And it was not about growth, it was about benchmark. It wasn't about wanting to jump higher every year. It was saying that every student will high-jump eight feet. So I think California's done a great job, and will continue to do a better job. Will measures be taken to save, to serve students better, healthier meals? The answer is yes, but it's a struggle. If you could give your card to... We meet all federal standards and state standards for healthy meals. I can't tell you what they are, but they are, reduce the amount of fat, reduce the amount of carbohydrates, reduce the amount of sugar in the... In this, in the amount of, in the types of food that students are getting. Even our pizza, which we contract out for, now has to meet federal standards. So we're going to continue to do that. There are no sodas on elementary schools. So we're doing our best, and we'll try to make it healthier. And we're also trying, through our outreach program, to make that more fun. Some of the schools have gardens where students grow fresh vegetables. I think we found, and this is, and I can't tell you, there's scientific research to support this, but when kids grow the food, they're more likely to eat it. So we're, we're hoping that it takes us a long way. Same thing, healthier food, prepackaged food is not healthy. Well, we do buy a lot of prepackaged food, just because we serve over 2 million meals a year. And, you know, it's not like the old days where you could serve it up and cook it up and get it out. So we do buy prepackaged food, it must meet federal standards. I should give a plug for my local favorite restaurant. It's not as good as that one on Guan Avana and Pippa. Uh, could you write your question down, Deputy? Uh, let's see. Can we have a breakdown sheet where every penny of the measure will go? Well, yes and no. And here's the problem. We don't know when, when there's a bond measure. I'm assuming you're tied on measure N. So when there's a bond measure, money is spent over periods of time. And this one, for example, has designed so that every five years, there'll be new issuers to purchase technology. Well, if I told you now we were going to purchase computers every five years, I would be wrong. Because five years from now, there'll be new technological devices. We, in the measure on the ballot, there's a general listing of where the money can be spent. Ultimately, it will be the Board of Education that will set priorities. And to some extent, they'll come from external forces like the state of California in terms of requirements for technology. The other thing we don't know, and I'll just give you an example, we recently renovated, well, recent, like eight years ago, renovated Pedley Elementary School. When we went in, we had a budget, I can't remember what it was, a couple million dollars. Well, it turns out, the state told us we had to do three-quarters of a million dollars in paths of travel for hand, for, not only for students, but all people with disabilities. State requirements change. I can tell you that generally, the money is going to go primarily to technology, career technology, classrooms, and renovating old schools. There may be a small amount of money in newer schools, particularly in labs, but primarily it's going to go to existing schools in the district. If you want more details, I'd be happy to sit down and go over spreadsheets with anybody. Yeah, I got it. Okay. So this is one, I, I can't answer. Do you honestly believe Common Core standards will help our future students? If so, and to what extent? Well, okay. I didn't write Common Core standards. Here's what I believe. I believe that when you have excellent teaching, that's the first and foremost thing that needs to happen in the classroom. I'd rather have great teaching and great content. That being said, we are told by the state ultimately, in adopting Common Core standards, that we must, we must use them. There are good things in Common Core standards. So the answer to that question is, I honestly believe that if we do the proper and good job of implementing them, and that if our teachers continue to do the type of excellent teaching that they do now, it will serve students in the future. And, and let me give you an example of one thing that we've done differently. And I, and we may have done this without Common Core standards. But in, in, in the old days, a year ago or two years ago, in math, from first grade through high school, we spent a lot of our time teaching children equations, but not what those equations mean. Now, if you walked into a classroom, we talk about what the equation's used for and what each step is. So what we found, even with some very bright students who knew how to do math, they would come up with answers that didn't make any sense. And by teaching the real fundamentals of math, which are embedded in Common Core standards and teaching them properly, students will be served well. But really, it's sort of like the gifts in our hands, and it's what we do with it. I believe that our Divisional Study Committee, which is 100% teacher-driven, our coaches and our teachers will implement the very best curriculum available to the students in the district. I also believe they would do that whether it were Common Core standards, our standards, or state standards. So that's what I honestly believe, so. With technology advancement in schools, how is the district going to prepare students who have never seen or used a desktop before or being, before being tested? Well, first of all, we are trying to make sure that in every classroom, students do have an opportunity to work on the types of computers that they will be tested on. And, and I want to tell you, that's not an easy thing. Because even as I mentioned before, students who are familiar with technology, like this young man here, are familiar with iPads. iPads are intuitive, they're colorful, they are fun to use. And then we put them in front of a desktop that's got a bunch of hard questions on it, and no pop-ups, and no cartoons, or no things coming up at it, and nothing even sells to you. So it's a lot different. They're not used to using mice at home. So part of our instructional time really needs to go to helping students with the tool to take a test. That's just the plain reality of it. So that's how we're working on it. And who knows where the test will end up? I hope that over time, the State Board of Education, the state, and the test makers will start making tests that are a little bit more intuitive and can be taken on something like an iPad or even a smartphone that students are used to. I mean, you know, you've all seen the ads now for the, you know, Samsung and the iPhone 6, but, I mean, people are walking around with smartphones that are as big as what my first TV was. And so, I mean, we really need to work with kids where they're at. So we're working on both ends. That's a good question. When will our high schools or middle schools receive California's distinguished school recognition? And how will this... And how will the state test prep come out? Be, I think, come out? Well, first of all, it's an application process. Some of them have been Title I Achieving Schools and up till now, our middle and high schools have not been eligible. Distinguished high schools and middle schools are very far and too between, and they're a great thing. And I'd like to see us have more of them. Now I will tell you right now, that probably any educator that you talk to in the country is going to tell you to look at New York in terms of the new testing that comes out. New York test scores were extremely low. And the Smarter Balance test is a new type of test. It's a test that's called adaptive. So that means there's not just twenty questions and you answer twenty in a row. So if you answer the first question and you do a good job, it'll take you to maybe question five. If you don't do as good a job, it'll take you to question six. So it's something that we're need to really learn to work with, and I don't have the answer completely here, so. Everything I said was fine, but I'd like to know what would happen with transportation since there are many families that need it? Well, I don't have a good answer. We've had to make a lot of cuts to the herd. I love seeing the buses roll. There's nothing safer than a school bus to get a child to school. I don't foresee funding increasing enough to really reinstate more transportation than what we offer. It's sad, the state gives us, we're about at average for what the state gives in transportation. Two years ago, the state actually tried to cut the funding. It's difficult to know where it will go. So I'm going to say that as long as the funding model stays the same, it's probably not going to change in the future. This one's in Spanish, so Sylvia? Shirley, I did that before. Oh, oh, you translated? All right, thanks, Shirley. Let's see, do I have any more? So I'll end by saying, there is probably, in my mind, nothing more heaven and sacred than taking in your nineteen thousand three hundred children every day. To have them come to school and be in the charge of our teachers, our principals, our classified staff, whether they ride on the bus, whether they're under the protection of our campus supervisors, your children are our charge. And we are, even by law, the law says, during the school day, we're in the place of you, the parents, and you, the community. And it's something I believe every single person in this district takes very seriously. I know I do. My three children went to school in this district. My wish is that every child has the same benefits my three had and behaves better than my three did. But that they get the benefits. My three all went to college, they graduated from college. And that's what I wish for every single child in this community. We have some hard things in front of us. Life changes faster than it ever did. And so we need to teach children to be resilient, to be adaptive, to think, to learn, and to learn things tomorrow that we as adults don't even know today. And again, I'm going to point to this young man, I'll kind of end on this story. There was somebody that did an experiment in India. They took a computer and put it in the wall in one of the worst slums in India. The computer was English and most of the children around were very poor children. But the children started to play with it, and as they played with it, they learned a little bit about it. And after a couple of months, children began teaching other children how to surf the internet. They learned language skills, they learned, they learned computer skills. So my belief is that every child comes to school with a wonderful brain, and it's our job to take that brain and do everything we can and take the, you know, the physical body that people bring, protect them, nurse them, and do the best we can. So my office door is always open. Please make an appointment if I didn't answer a question or concern. And thank you for your time, we appreciate you being here. And I'm going to thank you more of these. So thank you all and good night.